Welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks. It is Monday, November 18th at about 5:30 PM. This is the time and place for the Grand Forks Growth Fund JDA meeting. Item 1.1, roll call.
Weigle.
Here.
Osowski.
Here.
Berg.
Here.
Blansky.
Here.
Friedols.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Veen.
Here.
And Mayor Bochensky.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Item number two is action items. We'll hold a public hearing on 2.1. 2.1 is a Flexpace loan request. Acme Tools. Mr. Hatcher.
Thank you Chairman Weigle, Mayor Bochensky, members of the Jobs Development Authority, Kevin Hatcher, Business Development Manager from the Grand Forks Region Economic Development Corporation, speaking on the request of $96,307 loan request for Acme Tools, Flexpace request. We're fortunate to have Mr. Coolman, the owner of the Acme Tools, along with Scott Voight, CFO of Acme Tools here that are readily available if there's any company-related questions here. So background with Acme Tools, they're a locally family-owned and operated business here for many years, providing products and services related to building, remodeling, woodworking, needs for contractors, woodworkers, and do-it-yourselfers. The company, they're a leading authorized online retailer of tools and equipment and customers throughout all 50 states throughout the United States here. And that, the really big piece of that that's driving it is their e-commerce platform, something that some of the representation here may be familiar during the 2021, 2022 e-commerce requests originally. Generator law sales originally from that e-commerce platform resulting from the global pandemic during that timeframe. Acme Tools e-commerce infrastructure refers to all facilities and tools needed to operate e-commerce business, including their hardware, software, network, and services along to support the e-commerce operations from the beginning to end. That e-commerce platform, it offers more than 95,000 products from more than 300 different manufacturing-related companies. To continue on that e-commerce growth, that relates to this Flexpace request here, Acme Tools is planning to upgrade its infrastructure by implementing an integrated order management system and service cloud software platform. It'll improve many technological advancements for the company at the local distribution center here. It'll include impacting inventory tracking, enhancing warehouse management and automation-related key processes. This will improve their inventory accuracy, reduce some fulfillment times, and overall efficiency. Related to the full-time employment, company as a whole, they currently consist of 665 employees and will hire an additional 90 within the 24 months. Locally here in the Grand Forks region, related to that distribution center, the e-commerce center there, they will be hiring, I see in my notes here, 20 full-time employees for that platform there resulting from this project. Getting into the financing details, total project $3,390,000. Flexpace that's requested here, we're going to buy the interest rate down from Wells Fargo from 6% to 3% on that $3,390,000 note for that distribution center related to the e-commerce platform. Again, noting a loan amount of $96,307, and that's going to leverage Bank of North Dakota's grant portion of the Flex, Flexpace of $178,856. This Flexpace loan locally here will be deferred for 12 months, or, excuse me, deferred for 60 months, followed by 12 equal monthly installments here. And then, related to the collateral, loan to value, it's going to be 100%. Reason being, we're going to be applying a CD-related cash collateral for the full local amount requested here for the Jobs Development Authority here.
Thank you, Mr. Hatcher. I will open the public hearing on 2.1. Is anybody here to speak on items 2.1? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing on 2.1. We have a motion approved by Sandy, but second by Osowski. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item number 2.2, thank you, Mr. Hatcher. 2.2 is the temporary construction easement at the Hive. We'll open the public hearing on that one. Is anybody here to speak on item 2.2 for the construction easement at the Hive?
No approval.
Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion to approve by Osowski, second by Friedols. Further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item 2.3, Thread Lease Renewal. Open the public hearing on the renewal of Threads Lease. Anybody here to speak on item 2.3? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing on 2.3. We have a motion to approve by Sandy, second by Osowski. Further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item 2.4, Purchase Agreement Termination. Kringle Investments will open up the public hearing on 2.4. If anybody would like to speak on item 2.4, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on 2.4.
I move approval.
We have a motion to approve item 2.4, second by Friedols. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I move adjournment.
Motion is approved unanimously. We have a motion to adjourn by Osowski, second by Sandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign, motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned. All right, moving right along, we'll call to order the Grand Forks City Council meeting for Monday, November 18th, 2024. Roll call, please, Marine.
Weigle.
Here.
Osowski.
Here.
Berg.
Here.
Blansky.
Here.
Friedols.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
And Veen.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, and thank you, Marine, for your voice. You lost a little bit the hockey game, wasn't enough to get him across the finish line. Appreciate you still being here tonight and making it work. With that, item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item 1.3, Mayor's announcements, two, three announcements tonight. We are doing police chief interviews. We do initial interviews today, and we have presentations tomorrow, and you'll get to meet the candidates here shortly. Just hold on, Gretchen. Pretty excited, I think we've got some really great candidates, so I think we're going to end up with a great police chief, regardless of who we select out of the finalists, so pretty exciting. By the end of the month, we'll definitely know who we're going to have, probably some point next week, so just hold out a few minutes, you get to introduce them. Just a couple of heads up, first of all, this will be the last week for leaf pickup, so if you've got your leaves and they're coming down, get them on the curb. This will be the third pass, so it'll be the last chance to do that. And then, this week, we'll be heading to, myself and Mr. Phelan, we'll be heading to Washington DC for the National Guard reception. It's an annual invitation, I get to speak on behalf of the Grand Forks community. With that, we'll also be doing a Pentagon visit and some visits with our congressional delegation. Just want to thank General Dave DePtoole for arranging the trip. He gets us into the Pentagon and gets us all of our high-level Air Force meetings, so just wanted to give a special thanks to him as part of my announcements. That's all for announcements, so we'll move on to item number two, awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
And 2.1, presentation, beginning with police chief candidate introductions.
Mayor Bochensky, Council President Sandy, members of the council, we are very excited to have our police chief candidates here tonight. I will let them each introduce themselves, and like Mayor Bochensky said, we will finish up our process tomorrow.
Good evening, all. My name is Lieutenant Derek Zimmel. I'm with the Grand Forks Police Department. I've been with the Grand Forks Police Department for over 26 years, and I can't wait to see what the next chapter of our organization brings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Bochensky, members of the city council. My name is Jeremy Moe. I'm currently the CIB, our Criminal Investigations Bureau Commander at the Grand Forks Police Department. I'm a graduate of the University of North Dakota, and I've been here 19 years. Look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jason Friedman. I'm a captain for the City of Madison Police Department. Really appreciate the opportunity of coming out here and being part of this process. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Bill Mackey. I'm a deputy chief of police with the Grand Forks Police Department. I've been with the police department for over 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name's Danny Weigle. I'm a lieutenant with the University of North Dakota Police Department. Been there just over 13 years, and thank you to HR and everybody involved in the process. I think they've done a great job so far, and looking forward to the future of the Grand Forks Police Department.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you to Gretchen, HR team, great process, just appreciate the work you guys always do, so thank you.
Okay, and the next one is the project update for Project 8823, reconstruction of intersection of Demers and 42nd Street.
Mr. Krinko, please.
Good evening, Mayor Bochensky and members of the city council. Please give me just a moment as I get this presentation up and running. So, the staff report and presentation before you tonight are to give you just a project update on this rather large and important project for the city. Tonight, I am joined with Blue Weber and Les Norrie from Bolton &amp; Mank, as well as Wayne Zucker and Michael Johnson from the DOT. Previously, at the September 5th, 2023 city council meeting, council ended up selecting the B1 alternative, which was the East Jug Handle alternative, as well as the C1 Sunken Intersection alternative as the preferred alternatives. If B1 was ultimately selected, city council ended up asking for a baggage road for a three-quarter access for the gas station, as well as a U-turn at the Demers Avenue Jug Handle intersection to allow vehicles exiting the gas station to make a U-turn and get back to the interstate. This was all packaged up, sent over to the DOT for their final selection. Now, when that went over to the DOT, they ended up looking at this, they ended up working with FRA and Federal Highway as well, and ultimately ended up selecting the B1, the East Jug Handle alternative. And along with that, they ended up including comments to evaluate and incorporate as appropriate the three requested items from the city of Grand Forks. Now, as the project developed, Bolton &amp; Mank was selected for the design engineering services, and now we have reached approximately the 50% design stage of the project. This design has so far incorporated that baggage road that was requested, as that appeared to be a fairly reasonable access accommodation, whereas the other two requested access alternatives had some complications to them. Bolton &amp; Mank is anticipating in the near future here, after presenting to the city council here, to actually end up working with and communicating with the adjacent property owners in looking at, or discussing the current project design, as well as looking at temporary and permanent impacts, as well as property acquisition associated with that. Along with the 50% design is an update on the cost estimate. Though the design is not yet completed, the cost estimate is moving upwards from what was originally programmed, and we are continuing to monitor, and we're working with our project partners regarding that. Now, with that, I suppose I'll hand it over to Blue and Les.
Perfect. Thank you for having me, council and mayor. I'm here to talk about 42nd and Demers, exactly like Dave just said. This is a very high-level presentation. We're here to introduce you to the process that we're going through here, let you know some of the things that we've done behind the scenes, and kind of show off some things. But as you can already see on this rendering, it's a beautiful, fantastic graphic, but is a little bit older. We didn't, like Dave said, we're at that 50% mark, so these graphics haven't been updated, but there is some updated layouts that we'll jump through, so I'll start flying through. Probably one of my favorite things on this project is the amount of different processes behind the scenes on this one. So you can see from this org chart, there is a lot of different moving parts and team members on this one. So, not just through our subconsultant team, but also with all the different expertise that we bring to this. This was something that was really enjoyable for me to be a part of, but also just making sure that the city and the DOT has experts in every single thing that this project entails. Historical context on this, this shouldn't be too surprising, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows, this process really started in the early 90s. So, it goes back, this conversation, a pretty good ways back. And what you can see here is the current layout, kind of with that frontage road, like Dave was saying, but also with the entire current layout. This also has everything from the draft of what the water main looks like and all of those things. So, as this project started back in 91, moved all the way through, and then in 2023 was when the FRA grant. So, really kind of a huge milestone at that point. And then, like Mr. Krinko said, we took over and started working on the design on that. So, just a good kind of rough timeline on what this whole process looks like. Where we're at right now is still in these, construction phase, is kind of in that plan and design phasing, and so just a good rendering of what that area looks like to this day currently. Some of the different things that we've already accomplished behind the scenes are a large area survey, so throwing the drones up in the air, flying around on this, but also the geotech drilling and boring side of this thing. We had to go down 230 feet because you have to go down to be able to find the bedrock when building all these bridges and all the complexity of this, so there's a lot of work behind the scenes as we were doing all this. The things that we're working on right now are these active design tasks. This has the railroad shoe fly, which is a term that I had no idea existed until about a year ago. This means that we need to continuously have the rail in operation. So this shoe fly is more or less building a new rail line off to the side, allowing the BNSF to continue to use it, digging down where the old rail was, and then rebuilding the bridge that's going to be there. We also have to be looking at the retaining walls and the design on those, as well as what both of these bridges look like, because there are two bridges. There's the rail and the actual roadway bridge. The other things that we're working on behind the scenes are the water main. It's really kind of an insane thing to think about, that the entire water system for Grand Forks mainly feeds through this intersection. And so with this project being the size that it is, that means that we need to look at how we redesign that, how do we make sure that that water main still feeds the rest of Grand Forks, as well as drainage. A lot of this area is going to have to be part of the conversation, is how do we design this drainage to make sure for stormwater, when big rain events happen, what does that look like? The other process that we're very early on in, at about 20% right now, is the right-of-way and plats process. So, with a large federal project like this, we need to make sure that we're going through the federal right-of-way process. So you can see this chart right here that has a lot of information. Really, exactly like Mr. Krinko said, we're having our conversations now, because now it's the, at that point of the 50% documentation on the plans, where we can now start talking to the property owners and actually start finding out what that looks like. One of the other elements that makes this project very complex is that there is a golf course right here, and so by working directly with Ray Richards and with UND, it is part of this process, is trying to make sure that we keep the golf course operational. So, these renderings, like I said, these don't have the frontage road, but these are just some kind of high-level graphics to show what, over the next three years, you'll be seeing happening in that area. So, like I said, this shoe fly that comes off to the north side of Demers, as well as the road that's going to maintain access so people can keep driving through. Then, from there, we really start working on the railroad bridge, the Demers Avenue bridge, and the retaining walls, and the water main adjustments on that. From there, removing that shoe fly, removing that bypass, and then getting ready to do the road underneath, as well as the jug handle itself. And so that's the earthwork grading of that entire area, pavement marking, topsoil, and seeding, all those fun layers. And another aspect of this project is making sure that it looks aesthetically pleasing. And so, some of the things up at the top are really the things that we're emphasizing, but these are some other components that can go into the aesthetics and the architecture of this area. So, like I said, very, very high level tonight. I'm not a technical expert, so I'm really just here to let you know, we're working on this directly across the street, wanting to introduce myself and let you know that I'm here to answer questions, not very well, but I will find the answers for those questions, and just kind of give you some high-level dates on that. Thanks so much for letting me come and talk.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Any questions, Ms. Blansky, please.
So, I know you said the rendering is old, but just curious, will the entrance of the Alara Center kind of be on that new road? Or will it, on one of your last renderings?
So, here's, what I pulled up right now on the screen is probably the best one to look at, because you can see that 42nd still cuts across, so 42nd will travel under Demers, and then that jug handle will where you will connect back up to Demers. 42nd, thank you.
It was a page after that, now it won't load.
Maybe why don't you page through it, you can go from the back.
Yeah, which slide, do you remember which slide it was?
Right there.
This one.
So see how it looks like that, that new road goes right in front of the Alara Center? Is that the road you would take to enter the, I mean, obviously you can take 42nd also?
So that's going to be the frontage road, and so that is the current one that runs up to the Verge Apartments right there, and so that will come over to the gas station in Demers from there.
Okay.
That road is currently there.
Yep. It doesn't have this, this angle coming off of it that attaches to the jug handle, but that road is currently there in front of the apartments.
But you can't turn off 42nd onto it right now, can you?
You can.
You can.
If yourself, not, not north.
Gotcha. Okay, that was my only question.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Any further questions on this item?
I do have one question.
Mr. Phelan, please.
Just, just question on, what's the impact to the golf course? Because I didn't realize there was going to be that much, a couple of greens that look like have to be moved, and obviously tee boxes, too. Can you describe that a little bit better?
Yeah, first of all, I get to design a golf, or be part of a golf course design team, which was not something I expected was going to be part of my job description. What we're really doing is just looking at making sure that the golf course is usable. So, I don't want to get too deep into this, because we're still early on in this process as well, Councilman Veen, but I don't know how better to answer that of, other than we are currently working on that.
I would just say, Councilmember Veen, they've done a really, I've been at a couple meetings, they've engaged UND at the administrative level and also at the golf course level. I think that there's a few principles. Return it to its full nine holes, try to disturb as few holes as possible, and also what I heard is that the golf course will be down from operation for two years while construction is going, and UND has been a positive partner in wanting to make the golf course just as good as it is now. And so that's what I heard at the meeting, there'll be several more, but your golf course expert was here last week to work with UND and to actually walk the course and to see it firsthand.
Yep.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. I just, I hadn't seen anything before, and I didn't realize it was taking that much out of it with that jug handle, so I'll be interested in following up a little more detail if I could, Mr. Weber, when that time comes.
Excellent, I can do that.
All right, thank you for your time, we'll move on.
All right, Ultra Sports Complex update.
Mr. Phelan.
Mayor Bochensky, members of the city council, I wanted to give you an update, I want to also let you know that Ben Mattson from Construction Engineers is here this evening as part of the C Mar team, and then Adam Davidson from GLG is on here. Today and tomorrow, we're doing, they're doing stakeholder sessions, essentially with the major users and also with our partners on the project, so lots of work is going to go on this today and tomorrow, to really go through the design, get their feedback, so that when we do come back here in the new year, you'll have lots of the final input from the users. I think one of the great part of this project is we've had a lot of user input, more than most city projects, but for the most part, a lot of times, City of Grand Forks does not leave projects like this, so we brought in all the various stakeholders as part of this, to include this week. I wanted to give you an update on when we were last here, we went on some great tours of facilities, and out of that, out of those tours, we're moving forward with some thoughts on the steel structure itself. And so McGoff is working on cost estimating the Fargo Sports Center, that's a pre-engineered steel building. So they're looking at a price per square foot on that steel structure to include the turf. We have also, I know a lot, some folks are enamored of the Pollard Athletic Complex and that facility, and you know, what it costs, so we have moved forward with some of the ASBILts, and we're asking our third-party construction estimator, Blendall, and associates are looking at that steel structure and doing a comparison on a per-square foot from the Fargo Sports pre-engineered building versus the Pollard Steel Structure. So we'll have two comparisons about what those two, various two steel structures look like. The other thing that McGoff has moved forward with is that, as part of our estimating, is that they have selected a pre-engineered company to work with, a steel structure company. They've picked Gateway out of Fargo. They're the company that have worked on two specific projects as part of their reference. One was the Fargo Sports. One was the Fargo Sports Complex, and the other one is the, in Fargo, the, the Sanford Power Center. So those are their two examples. They've been added to the McGoff team, so we can take a look at those steel structures and see what's viable from an engineering perspective and also from a cost estimating perspective. So we've moved forward with those two and getting more intelligence, getting more experience, and getting better feedback that I think generally the city council wanted. The other thing that we heard at our, at our most recent advisory group meetings is that, at this, in the near future, we do not anticipate UND bringing the swim team back. So that was one of the decision points UND had to provide, is, you know, are we going to bring back swimming? Should we plan that as part of this initial development of this? And so what you're going to see when we come back is a phased development, so that if UND ever did bring back swimming, they wanted this to be the home of, of UND swimming. There'll be a, a portion of the facility that the land will be set aside for that to happen, but we're not going to plan that as part of this initial development. We are continuing to work as part of the aquatic complex, the deep well. UND Aerospace is still interested in that, so they continue to engage in that. And as you recall, that was like a $1 to $2 million addition to that, and UND has provided that, they'll pay for that if they want to move forward with, with that. So they, they are continuing to plan for that. We also had, we're working on a Mirtha pool, and with a Mirtha pool, that's, you know, if you go anywhere in a major competition around the world, it's generally a Mirtha pool, made in Italy. And so we're continuing to do, look at that as our pool of choice. We're going to have to have a administrative decision to this, to the city council, and we're using, lots of the users are getting input. Generally, a pool of a Mirtha pool is a standard pool depth of, you know, seven or so feet. So, but with our pool, we're looking at maybe one of the sides of the pool being more shallow to help with swimming lessons and people that aren't seven feet tall. So we are working on that, and likely will bring back a recommendation regarding that Mirtha pool adaptation. So we're working on that. The instructional warm pool is still in. It is a four-lane pool. If you, if you went down to the Halbert, Halbert West Fargo Public Schools Pool, they have a five-lane instructional pool. So ours is a little bit smaller, and that's, hence that's the reason why we may look at a shallower end of one of our, of the instruct, of the major pool, so that we can add for more for swimming lessons. So we're working on, on that. It is a warm water pool. It's an instructional pool. We, I have gotten some questions about, is it, is it a therapy pool, per se? And that's, that's another rung higher than an instructional pool. It is a warmer pool. It has more adaptations. Likely will only be able to get to an instructional warm water pool that will serve as therapy, but won't be quote-unquote "a therapy pool," per se. But we've had, have gotten questions that people are excited about the pool, they're excited about the warm water, and they're asking, you know, how much, how high of a pool can we do, and how many needs will it fit as we move forward? So we're trying to fit within our pool lots of different needs and uses within our community. The other thing, and I know later we're going to, we're going to talk about, we sold some bonds today. We maintain our AA2 bond rating, which is a good thing. And we have talked to Moody's, and we've talked to our bond council, and we've talked to our financial advisors, that we are intending to bond up to $100 million for this facility. And Marie has gone over, we do have the $10 million gift in addition, and we have some additional cash. So that, when we talk about the capital budget for this facility, that's why we always talk about 110 million. And so we've been real transparent with all the, all of our, our financial folks about what we're planning to do, and so you would see that in our Moody's report this evening, that we've talked about that. And the other thing you're going to hear is that, interesting enough, that we are working on a $100 million facility right now, which is the wastewater treatment plant renewal and expansion. So that's well underway. So those are the two major projects. We've highlighted to our financial advisors and to Moody's that two major projects that the City of Grand Forks is working on. Questions have come up on the FFNE, and right now we have FFNE, which would not be part of the capital part of this building. That's stated at about 1.5 million. And so we're going to be working on that, and those are all the pieces and parts of the facility that will need to go in, from furniture to various things that will have to go into this particular budget. We've talked about donors beyond the Ultra $10 million that we received. The Jim Freistad family donated a gift of $500,000. The local JR Simplot Company facility donated $75,000. We continue to work on others. We, and just so you know, we've talked to kind of the who's who in Grand Forks about donating or dedicating to this facility. And at this point in time, no others have committed at this point. They haven't said no, but they want to see how the project really transpires, comes together, and then we'll, we'll reengage in them at this time.
Yeah, it's a good question, Mr. Feendt. So we got $500,000 from who, a family?
A Jim Freistad family.
And from Simplot, you're saying, right? And is this actually for our facility, or is this donations to the children's museum?
No. Both of those gifts are to the, the Ultra Sports Complex. And the gift of Jim Freistad's family was in the spirit of, to the aquatic complex. That's where his family had enjoyed, so that's, but both gifts are to the Ultra Sports Complex.
Okay, thank you.
On the other thing, when we talked to our bond council, and Marie can talk a little further about this, is that we are planning to bond tax-exempt bonds. We've got the $10 million gift. We've got the, you know, $575,000 plus, because it's earning interest, is that we have to stay within a certain percentage, so that we do not, you know, hamper our tax exemptability. And that usually probably means we can get another $4 to $5 million beyond that $10 million. So there's, there's only so much more we can get from donations to go to the capital portion of that. Otherwise, we will, you know, hamper our tax exemptability, which will too, will be a big deal as part of this facility. So, but we're, we're working through all those details with, you know, professionals, make sure we really execute this well. The ONM, we've talked about operation and maintenance on this facility, and as we've gone through, the real game changers on the ONM were the instructional pool, reduced the ONM, and the pickleball reduced the ONM. And we are working on the capital portion of that, because I know we've talked about, you know, different places where we could go, should it be freestanding? But really, one of the positives, the part of bringing it together into this facility is it provides lots of revenue for users, and it provides users throughout the day for this particular facility. But we're working on that. Remember, that, that was about $381,000, plus or minus, was the operational deficit. Mr. Gossett and I are going to be meeting with, again, with the Park District. We've submitted an agreement with them. They've added some red lines to it, so we're going to get back together with them. We've also engaged Ultra, I mean, Alara Center and OBG regarding what value could they add to this particular facility too? So we're, we're working with both groups. We would intend probably near the end of this year that we'd have a finalized agreement about what the Park District is going to do, and, and if, and what the Alara Center and OBG may do as part of the facility. So, and probably the third partner is Visit Greater Grand Forks, because we really want to drive events to this. So those are the entities that we continue to work with on this particular facility. Mayor, that's what I have tonight, but I would say probably in two weeks, we'll have much more definitive information. And I know some people question, you know, we don't know what you know, and, and so we, we're trying to update you as much as possible. But the one thing I can say is I've been involved in enough projects where I try to trust the process, I try to trust the professionals that we've hired. And at the ultimate end of the day, we've got to make a decision with the best information we have, and I trust that the city administration, the city council will do that. But we're too early to come back with all that. But if there are some things you want studied, we've, we've listened, we've heard, and we followed up with trying to get better information back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Feendt. I'll open up to questions here in a second. Just want to take the opportunity to thank not only this council, but past councils. This has been two years in, in process. You know, the amount of input has really led to a professional, well-thought-out process, specifically with the consultant team as well. I just was jotting down, you know, some of the processes we've gone through to get to here, the feasibility study, the successful sales tax vote more than, roughly a year ago, operations and programming review, the architect selection, working with the bond council, and the financial modeling, the land acquisition, then the architect selection, C-MAR selection, schematic design approval, and now we're on to design development, and they're, again, meeting with the stakeholders, again, with probably dozens of meetings over the last two years. And I think, I'm glad you brought up the wastewater treatment plant. We've had thousands of hours of input on the sports complex, and not quite so much on the wastewater treatment plant, for some reason, but maybe one has more appeal than the other. But, yeah, I just want to thank the people that have been involved in it. They've done a really great job, and I've been really impressed from start to finish. And we're in the middle of the process, but we're going to get there and have a good product in the end for the community. So, thank you, everybody. And any questions at this time from, from council?
I have a question.
Ms. Soski, please.
Yeah, I was wondering if you could forward me the agreement that you sent over to the park board, and maybe even the red line that you received back from them, because I have been hearing a little bit about it, and I'd like to see it, so.
Mayor Bochenski, I'll send it out to all the council members, so that you have it in bands. And you'll know which draft we're, we're going to be working on, Dan and I, working on.
And I think, Dan, you sent the original draft over, and then I believe where we're at now is just an initial red line response from the Park District. Is that correct?
Correct. And then, as Mr. Feendt mentioned, we're going to be using that red line version to, to go over some matters that they've proposed to change, and we'll have that discussion. We thought it would be better than just keep following back and forth with red line versions. Let's have a discussion, so that we can be a bit more efficient and get an agreement done.
Excellent. Thanks for your work on that as well. Much appreciated. Any other questions from council? All right, we'll move on. Thank you.
All right. Moving on, the Blue Zones Project Grand Forks, Build Environment Grand Forks near North Neighborhood and Downtown Active Transportation Review and Recommendations.
Perfect. Very fitting, right after this project, so welcome back.
Thank you, David. Yep, I got it. Yep. All right. Thank you, Dave. All right. Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Nicole Benson. I am the Director of Community Programs and Policy Lead for Blue Zones Project Grand Forks. And standing up here with me today is Stephanie Hallford of the MPO, and David Krinko with the City Engineering. Both of them are chairs of our committee, along with Jill Proctor. So I just want to express my gratitude to the three of them. Their leadership in the last two years has just been remarkable, and very much appreciated by me. So, thank you to them. Quickly, what I want to do is kind of share with you guys the process leading up to the review and recommendation of the Act of Transportation Study, and then actually some things that the city has already implemented, and some things that we're working on implementing. So that is what we're going to look at. But before I do that, I just wanted to share with you guys some of the things this committee has accomplished in year one and year two. They're up on the screen right now. And just really recognize, when we talk about Blue Zones Project, it really is a community-led wellbeing initiative, and that starts with our chairs, and then bleeds over to our committee members. So when we look at the successes and our accomplishments in the first two years, it really is because of those committee members, which are our community members and those stakeholders within the City of Grand Forks. But I want to really recognize Stephanie, Jill, and Dave. They really have been instrumental in driving this work. They've helped to set our priorities as a committee, and each of them played a pivotal role in planning for our policy experts to be on site, and then to kind of prioritize the different items in the recommendation that we wanted to push forward. So I just really appreciate their expertise and their guidance in this process. All right. So a little bit about what led up to the study. We had two of our national team experts here on May 13th and 17th, or through the 17th, and we kept them extremely busy. So Tuesday morning, we spent time at Wilder Elementary. We observed the drop-off, and then had a meeting with Wilder staff, members of the PTO, and several of our committee members, and just talked about what are things that are really working well regards safe, safe streets, safe routes to schools at Wilder? What are maybe some opportunities that we can kind of further dive into? And then the group walked around the school and just looked at what are the conditions and what are other opportunities that we saw and identified? And then we closed that with observing the pickup, and then how Wilder was using their crossing guard. Wednesday, we did something similar, but at Central High School. So I had our experts get up bright and early and observe the drop-off on Fourth Street, and then we met with central administration, the SRO officer, the DDA, and we had a city engineer there, and just kind of talked about, again, what are some opportunities? Is there any concerns that the school is having? And, you know, what, what are some possibilities? And then we observed that lunchtime process. So where are the students going, and how are they getting to those different places downtown during the lunch hour? Spent the afternoon meeting with the Downtown Development Committee, and just talked about all things walkability and different projects that the DDA is working on. Thursday, we conducted our walkability training for about 20 community stakeholders. That training went extremely well. Participants made numerous comments about what they learned and took away. Our experts identified a lot of amazing things that our city's doing to make our community more walkable, more bikeable, more accessible. So that was really fun to have, you know, people from California and Idaho coming to Grand Forks and saying, wow, you're doing this really well, or this is a great thing that your city's doing. So that was, that was really nice to see. And then the, in the evening, we participated in a public forum. We partnered with DDA and AARP, and really that was more community-focused. So what can community members do to advocate for walkability, accessibility within the community? We had just over 20 folks attend that, and then we also had five different individuals who are running for various offices within the community. So a really great turnout and a great opportunity that we were able to leverage those experts to, to lead us in. And then Friday, we conducted a quarter walk and looked at the one-way couplets on Third and Fourth Street, and talking about, you know, do we want to convert those back to two ways? What are the other options, ideas? And put some of those recommendations. And really, when looking at what are some opportunities, you know, maybe it isn't best to jump right into that converting to the two ways? Maybe, you know, there's opportunities to do something different. And I think some of those recommendations supported the diagonal parking that was extended down to downtown. So really appreciate that. So what happened after that is they gathered, gathered information before, during, and after the visit, and they put together their recommendations. And then what we did was our chairs and committee really looked at what are opportunities? Are there any low-hanging fruit that we can really get after? What are things we want to keep looking at? And then you'll see that our city engineers and city staff were excited to jump in and made a couple improvements right away. So when looking at, you know, walkability, safety around Wilder, as our days are getting shorter, they were able to identify and replace some of those streetlight fixtures near Wilder to make those students more visible in the mornings and after school. They installed a high-visibility crosswalk at Wilder Elementary. Central High School, same thing, looking at those light fixtures. There were some that weren't operating right, and helping to do some of that. They had to realign the pedestrian head at the intersection of Gateway Drive, and then just some of the support for that Third Street, Fourth Street, one-way to, two-way conversion. We have some things in progress. So again, listing some of those things that the city is looking at, and as a committee, we're looking at signal retiming on North Fifth Street in Demers. The DOT has a project with HPS streetlights to LED lights, potential bumpouts, and then in 2027, looking at the Gateway Drive pedestrian underpass and potential lightning, lighting updates and other, maybe beautification or things that we can do around that. And then, as always, continuing to replace pedestrian ramps with new ADA panels. So that was kind of a rapid-fire kind of highlight of the work that was being done. And again, I just wanted to thank you guys for your time, for your support of the project, but more importantly, our chairs for the work that they're doing here in the city and the support that they're providing, and our committee members. And I'm excited to see what we are able to do in year three. So, any questions, thoughts?
Well, thank you for the work you've done, definitely. We really appreciate that. I know at City Hall, working with Tammy Burris as well, they've, they've moved the needle on a few things, so I appreciate your, your engagement there. Any council questions, please, Ms. Lonsky?
I just wanted to say thank you. I was able to go to some of the presentations, and I think what you're doing is your, your bright light in the community, so thank you.
Well, thank you, Trisha.
Any other questions or comments? All right, have a great evening. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
2.2 is the Proclamation Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, November 17th through the 23rd.
All right, thank you. I, Brandon Bochenski, Mayor of Grand Forks, North Dakota, hereby proclaim the week of November 17th to the 23rd, 2024, as Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week. I encourage it all, all citizens, to not only recognize that many people do not have housing and need food and need food support, but volunteer and connect with a local nonprofit in our community. Take time during this week to volunteer, donate, or educate. And then the full proclamation will be available on the website. All right, that's it for Item Two. Item Three, Public Hearings and Second Reading of Ordinances.
3.1 is Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinance dedicating right away on the plat of Airport 73 Subdivision and final approval of the plat.
All right. We'll open the public hearing for Item 3.1. Anyone here to speak on Item 3.1, please step to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion and open to council for discussion or motions.
Motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Ms. Berg, we lost President Sandy for the quick motions here. So Ms. Berg's motion approved. We have a second from Ms. Slonsky. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor, before you go forward, I think somebody is here to speak just on the 2.2 they were walking up as we were going through.
Oh, do we have? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Shurek, I didn't see you back there. Thank you, Mr. Weigel. I would have read more of the proclamation if I saw that you were here too, so busted.
Thank you, Mayor Bochinsky, all the members of the council. Thank you for allowing us to share a video with you today. Sue is going to talk briefly about hunger and homelessness in our community, and then we'll show the video. I just wanted to say, the video has came about from a lot of brainstorming from the Greater Grand Forks Food Security Committee. Our Committee is comprised of about 20 organizations, all working together to address hunger in our community. Can those organizations please stand up in the room? Thank you for coming tonight. Our intent really is to highlight that hunger is here in Grand Forks and it impacts everyone, from individuals to families, from children to seniors. And together, we really can make a difference. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. Sue?
Thank you, Mayor Bochinsky, members of the council. Thank you for recognizing Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week because it really is what we do. And as we look at a community that has all this cool stuff coming to it, that really makes it a warm and welcoming community with a lot of jobs and opportunities and a future that we see moving forward, we have a population who struggles. And one of the interesting facts that I heard last week during Veterans Day presentations was that 25% of active-duty military families struggle with food insecurity. That's active duty. We need to do a better job as people in our community and our region to ensure that everyone has food on their table and has a safe place to go home to. We have seen food insecurity and the need for food resources in our community grow and grow and grow. So I have some statistics that my friend Mickey from St. Joe's has shared with me and that I will share with you along with the mission statistics. So if you took the number of food boxes that we at the mission did in one year, it would equate the weight of 17 school buses, 408,625 pounds of food given in food boxes in 12 months. And from St. Joe's, so far this year, they have given out 260,920 pounds of food to 2,302 families. Now, you go to either one of our food pantries, you get one box a month. And we have several micro pantries. We have a new pantry that started up at Altru so that when a patient is leaving, they're going home with healthy food to help them in their recovery process. Spectra has food boxes that they're giving out. The number of places that you can go to get food continues to grow, but the need continues to grow. We have an app where we track every person who comes in, and it shows the date you were last there. So we know that you haven't been double-dipping. But that need continues to grow. If you took the number of hot meals that the mission did in the month of April alone and you stacked all those Styrofoam containers, one on top of the other, it would be taller than the tallest building in the world. And if you took all that we did in 12 months, it's almost as tall as Mount Everest. That's a lot of food. It's also a lot of waste that's going into our garbage that we are trying to deal with. But that's just food. And that's just who comes to us for a hot meal, who comes to us for a food box, and that's just our two entities. We serve 1,200 kids every weekend with backpack food. So these are kids who are eligible for free and reduced lunch, and we're only doing 1,200. There's about 2,500 kids in our Grand Forks Public Schools who qualify for free and reduced lunch, but 1,200 of them are getting these meals. We have a critical need of people who just don't have enough food on their table. We will be serving Thanksgiving dinner on Thanksgiving Day from the mission. We're planning on serving 1,500 meals that day. Some of those will be delivered, some will be people coming to pick them up at the door, but we want to ensure that seniors, homebound people, people that can't afford it, all have a Thanksgiving dinner. Beyond that, this is also Homelessness Awareness Week. And we have a lot of people who are teetering on the edge of being homeless. St. Joe's provided emergency assistance to 161 families so far this year, equating at $48,000. And they gave out vouchers for home items and clothing to 134 families or individuals at a cost of $15,000. The mission helped move 288 people into permanent housing this year, people who were homeless but are now housed, people that are probably going to be needing food boxes and meals and help for a while as they gain their independence. But 288, that's the most we've moved into permanent housing since 2017, when we first started keeping track of these statistics. We provided 16,941 nights of shelter, that many times somebody laid their head on a pillow. And through our family shelter, we're able to provide nights for 53 family individuals as well. We have a critical need for resources for homeless families in our community. There just aren't enough spaces to house the families that need to come in out of the cold. People are staying in their cars. They're staying in unsafe situations. And we need more resources for that. We have a great community. We have a lot of great partners who are here tonight who are doing their best to provide the services that are needed. And I think you're going to get a better understanding of what hunger in our community looks like from this video. And we welcome you all tomorrow to come to the event we're having at the Empire from 11 to 1, where you can hear some of the different organizations present. I brought a bunch of different flyers for you that show some data and statistics in my business cards because I have a lot to get rid of before I retire. And I will leave all these here for you so you can have them. If you have any questions, I also brought, we have a local homeless coalition called CANA, and it's a bunch of agencies who work together, Community Agency Networking Association. And I brought flyers from all, that show all our organizations. So if you have questions, if you want to know where resources are, if you have somebody who's your constituent who needs help, here's a great resource for you that has that information on it. So we thank you, and we're very excited to share this presentation with you.
Wait one second, Ms. Shurek, before you play that, I know you're coming up on retirement in probably six months, and I don't know if we'll get another chance. So I just, on behalf of the City of Grand Forks, just want to thank you for the work you've done at the Northam's Rescue Mission over the past, how many years has it been now?
Since 2017.
Since 2017. But you've really, it's been a sea change in what's happened there. And I think that's going to resound for many of the people in your position for years to come. So before you play the vid, I just wanted to thank you and then the other members that are here tonight. You know, we can't, nobody can do this by themselves, and I think we all realize that. And the work of everybody coming together is definitely taking a bite out of it. It's not going to stop. It's something we're going to have to continue. It's not something we're going to win, but we're going to keep fighting. And you've got an ally here with the city. So just want to thank you. And just one chance to honor you. I hope we get another chance before you walk out the door for the final time.
We invite you all to come to the table when we discuss hunger, when we have homeless issues. We invite you to come to the table. We need to all work together to be part of this solution. So thank you.
Thank you.
Respect. You're closer than you think. Affecting neighbors, coworkers, and friends right here in our community. Don't believe me? 13% of children in Grand Forks County experience food insecurity. Kids just like me.
On Fridays, we give backpack food to the kids that the families have asked for it. And there have been a couple of times where there weren't enough bags sent. And when kids don't get those, there's definitely fear of what will I do? What will I eat? I would tell someone who doesn't know what food insecurity looks like in the schools to just take a second and look at the number of kids who receive free and reduced lunches across the district, and then just think about what that life looks like for them on the weekends or in the summer, when they're relying on the meals in the park in June and July and don't have anything for August, and just wondering what it would be like to be them, because it's hard.
A lot of the food insecurity problems that I've noticed are from the gaps that I tried to fill when it comes to having a household with many working people. I work, but then I'm also a full-time mom every day. And then my husband, my kid's father, he works all the time as well. If we had disaster happen, if I broke a leg, if my husband had a heart attack, if one of my kids got sick, then I'd be really worried. So what do you do at that point? It's hard.
I myself, I always didn't want anybody to know. When I first got on my social security and disability, I felt it, I was really afraid that I was never going to have enough. It was scary. It was really scary. But the embarrassment was a risk to get over.
The mentality of growth in Africa is that once you arrive in the United States, you have reached heaven. But I have to explain to them that it's not as they think. There is still food insecurity in the United States. There are food insecurities still existing in the United States.
I've changed. I'm not afraid to ask for help when I really need it, because no one should feel bad about if they, if they need food. It could be the person who lives right next door to you. It's sad. It's sad because no one should be hungry.
All right, thank you. And I just would recommend anybody that, you know, has a chance, if you can look into these organizations, help donate to them, anything you can give, even just a little bit, it goes a long way. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Item Four, Citizen Comments as they relate to action items. Any comments this evening, Ms. Lenmark?
None for action items.
All right. Move on to Item Five, Action Items. We didn't have any specifically. We're going to poll from administration. So any of that staff or any of the council?
I'll take 5.8.
5.8.
Mayor, could we actually poll 5.1?
5.1. Oh, yes, perfect. Thank you, Ms. Dorsted. Any other items council would like to poll for further discussion? All right, seeing none, we look for approval on a consent agenda for Items 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, 5.7, 5.9, 5.10, 5.11, 5.12, and 5.13.
I move approval.
Motion to approve from Ms. Sosowski, second from Vice President Weigel. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. So we're on to 5.1 and 5.8, Ms. Dorsted.
5.1, Adopt Resolution Awarding Sale and Directing Issuance of Refunding Improvement Bonds, Series 2024-C, and I'll just speak a bit to that.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. So I have Mr. Steve Scharf from Baker Tilly that is attending virtually, that they serve as our municipal advisor. And he will go through bid results with you today on these bonds that we're issuing. But before I turn it over to him, just as a recap, we are looking at issuing roughly $6.6 million bond for special assessment projects. On October 21st, you approved this financing mechanism and set the sale date for today. Those bids were received by Baker Tilly this morning, and he will go through that with you. But I believe we had six bidders. So that is good, that we had a good competitive process. As Mr. Fieland had stated, in between this time period, we did hold a reading call with Moody's Rating Agency, and we did maintain that very positive AA2 rating, which is always a good sign when we go into this environment of wanting a competitive bidding process. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve, who will go through how those bids came in today.
Yeah, thanks, Maureen. Good evening, Mayor Bochinsky and council members. As Maureen mentioned, I'm Steve Scharf, Director at Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors, Financial Advisor to the City. And before I go over the results today, you know, I don't think Maureen's one to brag too much, but I certainly will on her behalf. As she mentioned, on, as part of the bond issuance process, the city did go through a rating conversation with Moody's Investor Services. And as was already mentioned, the city did have its rating affirmed at AA2, which is certainly a strong rating. But as part of that conversation and then the subsequent rationale, the rating agency did make a few highlights. I wanted to mention first, really as a direct reflection of the staff at the city, and that's primarily its strong financial position with strong budgeting practices, which is no doubt resulting from the team that you have there at the city. Moody's did also mention steady economic and tax-based growth supported by the institutional presence of the Air Force Base and the University, which are certainly, you know, highlights worth mentioning as well. But I did want to spend a second just mentioning and doing a bit of bragging on behalf of staff at the city, you know, that they did highlight some items that are a direct reflection of the staff that you have and the management practices you have in place. So kudos to everybody on that. The team certainly put their best foot forward in that conversation with the rating analyst. So as was mentioned, oh, yeah, absolutely.
I don't think she agreed to say that because we don't have the budget for that. So, thank you.
No, and just, I guess candidly, you are a delight to work with on every occasion. And so I always look forward to the opportunity to do that. So I'll certainly brag on their behalf. I have no problem doing that. And as was mentioned, today was kind of the big day that we all worked towards on selling these bonds, the Refunding Improvement Bonds, Series 2024-C. I will go ahead. I don't see that I can, there we go. I can share my screen here. Go over the results of that today. So at 10:30 this morning, we took bids on these bonds. We did receive six bids, as Maureen mentioned. The winning bidder in this case was Brownstone Investment Group out of Newark with a true interest cost of 3.79%. So we award on a true interest cost basis. That is, it's an interest rate metric that I largely like to sort of compare it to APR on a consumer loan. It's just a measure of your cost of funds or cost of borrowing. One thing I do like to look at is the comparison between the winning bidder here, so we have Brownstone Investment Group, and the ones right behind it. It's sort of a measure of level of competition or competitiveness. And we can see how similar they were in rate overall. So we can see that 3.79% was the winner. And then the next three after that were really within 0.05% of the winning bid. So really an exceptional outcome. Six bids is a strong bid result overall. Last year, we got seven. we got seven. So both strong outcomes between this year and last year. I will say this year, we were about 1% lower than last year, so just as a measure of where the market has been, certainly a good result overall. And just as a reminder, about a month ago, when we were having this conversation, we were anticipating a rate of around 4%, so we did come in a little lower than that. We did also receive some premium as a result of the sale today, and that's just an outcome of the dynamic between the interest rate column that I'm sharing here and the re-offering yield column. Anytime that interest rate column is higher than the re-offering yield column, investors are paying you some money upfront to have that dynamic. And as an effect of that, we were able to reduce the size of the bonds down to around 6.3 million, or excuse me, 6.13 million. So just as a recap again, really strong result today. I would recommend awarding to Brownstone Investment Group as the lowest true interest cost bidder, and then moving to approve the resolution that you have before you. But before that occurs, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Scharf? I guess just a quick question, as you're seeing this bid come in, obviously 20 basis points better than we had expected. Is that, where are you seeing other municipalities? Are we competitive beating them? I mean, being down a whole interest, a whole hundred basis points is pretty exceptional from last year.
Yeah, that's a great question, Mayor Baczynski. You know, Grand Forks generally tends to show up strong in the market. I will say that. I think it's reflective of the six bidders that had signed up and provided a bid today. There's a lot that goes into comparing one versus the other, but I will say 3.8% is a really good rate, and just overall from other sales that occurred today, it is one of the lower ones from a similar term structure. So this one being 25 years, we would look at similar structures out there, and this would be on the lower end. Again, we were expecting somewhere in the 4% range. That's more of an overall, here's what the market would probably expect. So 3.8 is certainly a strong outcome.
All right, great. We'll leave it at that, and I think that's a, I think that just shows the tension to growth that we've had in the last few years, and, you know, it's starting to pay off now, and it'll continue to pay off in the future as we become stronger financially. So, do we have a motion?
I have a question, actually. So, this is normally what we do, is we bond for these projects, correct?
That is correct.
So right now, we're gonna bond for the six mil, over 6 million, 6 and 1/2 million. And then I'm confused, I guess, about then where the funding is coming from when we talk about the 81 corridor, because that, is that like additional, an additional 7 million that we got a loan from, from the state, correct? And then, so we'll have to pay that back?
Yes, that is correct, Ms. Osowski, members of the council. So there's, we are also taking out some SRF financing for that low 2% financing for certain areas, too. So that would be separate from this bond issuance.
Okay, okay, but they're two separate things, each for about $7 million, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the bid from Brownstone Investment Group? We have a motion from Ms. Osowski. Do we have a second? I'm gonna give it to Ms. Lunskey, ladies first. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Scharf and Ms. Dorsted.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Moving to 5.8, preliminary approval of vacation of right-of-way at Eastman's on lots 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12, Block 1, Dank Second Re subdivision, located 1450 to 1660, South 42nd Street.
All right, thank you, Ms. Osowski. Do you have a specific question? Mr. Brooks is at the podium.
I guess I just have a comment, and then I'm ready to vote, so I don't have any questions for you. Thank you, sir. When it comes to this entire project, I feel, I'm sick of kind of kicking the can down the road, I guess, and waiting to see, you know, what the budget's gonna look like, or what the numbers are gonna look like, what kind of buildings we're even going to build out there. And so I just can't, in my right mind, continuously vote for us to move this project that we don't know too much about or that we really haven't fully seen a plan for. So, but I'm ready to vote.
Okay, I'll just comment on that quickly. I think this is a completely normal process when you're doing a large project like this. The information's been shared for years now on this project, and as you go through schematic design, design development, I wish Mr. Davidson was still here, you're gonna get more refined estimates and numbers. And I think if you look at what's actually included in it, as we went through schematic design, is almost exactly the same as it was when we had the citizens voted on it, and nearly 2/3 of them voted in favor. So I'm pretty proud of it, so I would disagree with your comments, but...
I guess my main concern is that we continue to push these large projects down the road, and I feel that recently we've had a lot of failed projects as the City of Grand Forks. And I, I don't enjoy continuously spending man-hours and pushing these projects down the road when they're not even fully defined, I guess, in my mind. And, I mean, we have Foo Fang, we have Epic, we have Epitome. We have a lot of projects that we just keep kicking the can down the road and crossing our fingers that it's gonna work out, and none of them seem to. We spend a lot of man-hours on this stuff, and I'm sick of spending money and wasting time on projects when we don't know what we're gonna build, and I still haven't seen any kind of numbers that fit within the $110 million budget that is proposed for this project. And so until we start seeing some of those things, I refuse to vote in favor of continuing to push it down the road.
Okay, thank you for your input. Any further comments? All right, do we have a motion on item 5.8?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Ms. Berg. Do we have a second? We have a second from Mr. Friedhofs. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
All right, motion approves 5 to 1 with Ms. Osowski dissenting. Thank you. All right, that's it for action items. So item 6, information, Ms. Dorsted.
6.1, Investment Portfolio Management Summary as of October 31st.
All right, thank you. Received and filed. Item 7, approval of minutes and bills.
I move approval.
7.1 is that vendor's list.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the vendor list?
I move approval.
Got a motion from Ms. Lunskey, second from Mr. Friedhofs. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And 7.2 minutes from November 4th.
All right, do we have a motion to approve as is?
I move approval.
Got a motion from Ms. Osowski. Do we have a second? A second from Mr. Friedhofs. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously, and thank you again to the finance team for standing on top of those meeting minutes. That's pretty phenomenal. All right, item 8, citizen comments of the general nature. Do we have any comments this evening, Ms. Lundmark?
Got three comments this evening. Jody Carlson?
Ms. Carlson, please.
Thank you. I was thinking at one point that if I never stood before this council again, it would probably be too soon. And I'm sure there's a few of you that might have the same feelings. I will try to talk fast. Part of, I'm a little bit angry with some of the stuff that I have come about, and I believe a lot of you should be angry too, because I believe that our city council has misled many of you. For one, for the new people looking at the Chief of Police, do not ever allow our city council to weaponize our police department against its citizens ever again. I will say that I saw an article that came out in the newspaper the other day, and it was about Epitome Energy. And Epitome Energy is not Epitome Energy, it is Foo Fang 2.0 when it comes to the due diligence of the city council. And I caught wind from the newspaper that Epitome Energy was going to be breaking ground spring of '25. So I sent out an email to Tom Ford, to Keith Wondt, to Mr. Phelan. Nobody could answer me, and I believe I may have forwarded this to all of you, if I have, and I have it, and you are, I'm free to share it with you, asking who the backers are, because the last I heard before this particular newspaper article came out is the only backers for Epitome Energy were two Chinese companies. So when I hear that they're breaking ground come spring of '25, it makes me wonder, oh, did they get some backers? Nobody can answer that question. As of October 7th of this year, nobody can answer that question. So I looked back a little bit more, and I made FOIA requests, because nothing can be transparent, that I can just call and ask anybody questions anymore. Everything has to go through FOIA and whatnot. So I made FOIA requests on a development agreement, a pilot agreement, and some type of agreement for bonding, which I don't understand. And I will share with you that I have in my hands, right in front of me, a signed, the signed, the end of it, it's like 154 pages, the signed copy of the development agreement with Epitome Energy that includes Dennis Inge, Brandon Baczynski, and Maureen Dorsted that all signed off on a development agreement January 10th, 2024. Keep in mind, October 7th of 2024, I could not be given an answer, who are the investors? But we've got pilot agreements, and we have development agreements that are already in place with Epitome Energy, and we don't even know who the investors are. Now, we understand that there was an issue with foreign land investment that went before the legislature not too terribly long ago at the last session. There's been an interim committee that has been working on it since that point, because they couldn't come to an agreement. But since that time, since the last legislative session to now, any foreign purchase or investment of agricultural within the land, within the state of North Dakota for agricultural land is absolutely prohibited. So how can you go into development agreements with a company who the only two investors at the time that I knew about and I investigated, the only two investors are foreign investors? Well, then, I believe it was Mr. Wondt that came out and said, no, they are a, they are a state, a local LLC. No, they're not, they're a foreign LLC. And I looked that up on the page for the, through the Secretary of State. Hang on one second, because there was something I didn't want to miss on here. Oh, yes, Keith Wondt said, it's currently organized as a domestic LLC, and it's not. It's organized as a foreign LLC, which doesn't necessarily mean, and we all know, it doesn't mean that it's a foreign country, it means that it is out of North Dakota. I played the shell game with the investors for Epitome Energy. I don't know whether or not Epitome Energy will ever come or not, but I can tell you that the failure and the lack of due diligence on your part sends flags and red bells going off like crazy. Because of that failure, are we going to end up into another issue just like we did with Foo Fang? And it makes me very concerned. The second part of it is that we have a development agreement, we have a pilot agreement with Epitome Energy.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson, that's gonna be your five minutes.
They have not even purchased the land.
Thank you for being here tonight, your five minutes.
Let me, let me ask you a question.
Please take a seat, we have another...
They have not purchased the land.
Ms. Carlson, you're disrupting the meeting now.
How does the city have the authority to enter into agreements with the company who has not even purchased the land?
Your five minutes have been completed, please sit down.
So if I send you emails, will you answer them?
Ms. Carlson, your time has been completed.
Will you answer my emails?
Please sit down. Thank you for coming.
Will you answer that question? If I send you an email to follow up, will you please answer my questions?
I've asked you twice now, you're disrupting the meeting. Please sit down, we have other speakers. Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Next speaker, please, Ms. Lundmark.
And thank you, Ms. Osowski, and if Mr...
Ms. Carlson, please take a seat.
Thank you.
Mr. Beclaire.
Mr. Beclaire, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Before I begin, I'd just like to acknowledge one of our great citizens of Grand Forks had passed away, true American and always acted in the best interest of citizens, Dennis Cadillac. So a brief pause before I begin in recognition of contribution Dennis Cadillac made to the community. Good evening, Mayor Baczynski, city council members. I'm here to address a critical issue facing community enforcement North Dakota Century Code regarding Foo Fang's land ownership and our city's response to national, excuse me, national security concerns. First, let's consider the wisdom of Charlie Munger, Vice Chairman of Berkshire Hathaway, one of the most successful companies in America. Two comments, show me the incentives, and I'll show you the outcome. And eight years ago, before artificial intelligence occurred, during a CNBC interview, they asked him about artificial intelligence. He said, I'm bullish on it because the real thing is in short supply. So when you have a corn plant from China wanna locate the north end of the corn belt, and none of the major players have engaged, that should tell you something what they're up to. So, the city has not enforced North Dakota Century Code requiring Foo Fang to sell over 300 acres of lands. This inaction raises questions about where city officials' loyalty lies, with Team USA or Team China? The lack of penalties for non-enforcement has created a misalignment of incentive structure. To address this, I propose federal legislation. I'm glad you're going to see the Pentagon. I call it the Jack and Jill and Bill legislation. Jack and Jill refers to when you have public officials use their position to leverage their personal interests ahead of national security, much like a jack, right? So I have a small hydraulic jack, weighs 20 pounds, can move over 2,000 times its weight. That's what the city did when they didn't properly help with the investigation regarding Foo Fang. So this act would hold city officials accountable for enforcing state laws regarding foreign land ownership. How would we do it? We withhold federal funding from cities that failed to cooperate with federal investigations, like the recent US Air Force. Just as we have Mayor Baczynski that didn't participate, we also had President Sandy, Danny Weigl, and also Ms. Lunski that chose not to voluntarily work with the national security investigation. Again, I find it interesting, Mr. Weigl, you're applying for Chief of Police, why don't people choose to be part of investigations? Hmm, they all generally, they have something to hide. How would this work? It's pretty simple. You got CFIUS, Committee for Foreign Investment in the United States, is chaired by what? The Secretary of Defense, Secretary of Treasury. Secretary of Defense would say, hey, I got a concern in the community here. They're not cooperating. US Treasury would simply say, hey, we're not gonna send any money to them till they cooperate and act like Americans. The newest Secretary of Defense, Pete Hegseth, nominated by Trump, I think will be very much in line with that. The goal is simple, align the incentives with national interests. If officials choose to act in China's best interests, they shouldn't expect American taxpayers to foot the bill. I ask you, Mayor Baczynski, council members, how do you justify prioritizing a foreign entity's interests over those American citizens and national security? Your actions and lack thereof speak volumes about your allegiance. In conclusion, we need an immediate action. Enforce North Dakota Century Code regarding foreign land ownership, fully cooperate with the federal investigation, and support legislation to hold city officials accountable for their decisions. Remember, the incentives we create today shape the outcomes we face tomorrow. Let's ensure those outcomes benefit Grand Forks in America and not foreign interests. The other thing we'll address at a later date, the real reason why Foo Fang was here, has to do with what they were doing at UND. Pay attention to what's happening in Brazil in the next 24 hours and the announcements being made. I haven't been wrong before. I don't see myself being wrong in the future. Thank you kindly for your time, and I look forward to you acting in the best interest of all Americans.
Thank you, Mr. Beclaire. Next speaker, Ms. Lundmark.
Nelson Rossid, if I mispronounced your name, I apologize.
Mr. Rossid, please, floor is yours.
Mayor, city council members, my name's Nelson Rossid. I live at 600 North 1st Street. So back in July, it was widely publicized... So, back in July, it was widely publicized that the Epic Corporation, the builders of the Beacon Development filed for Chapter 11. But long before that official announcement, work had stopped at that pavilion stage structure. Now, from what I understand, the city owns that plot of land between those two buildings. No?
No, not yet.
Not yet?
No, we wouldn't purchase it until the project would be completed.
Okay, well, that was one of the questions I had. The thing is that they did hydroseed that site, but they conspicuously left off that parcel. It's kind of a no-man's land right now, it's a eyesore, there's nothing usable, there's concrete, steel, some rusty rebarb. So I'm wondering how we can, you know, go forward on that. The other issue with the Beacon is that, if you recall, the Townhouse Hotel was at the present site. Now, there was no architectural gem, but it did, it was nicely landscaped. There are many mature trees, evergreens on that site. Epic cleared the entire lot. I mean, every tree, shrub, blade of grass was leveled. Not only did they cut down all those mature trees, they cut down most of the burm trees on North 1st Street, North 2nd Street, and 8th Street. To replace those, what, they planted a couple saplings. They've done nothing other than this hydroseeding, which, as I said, they didn't do the parcel in between the two buildings, which is, you know, wasteland. So, in contrast, the Circle K new gas station on Washington planted 10 times more trees on that gas station site than Epic did in their major residential, you know, development. So at this point, I don't think that third building's ever going to be built, considering Epic's, you know, financial condition. Of course, I don't know what, you know, the details of that, but it doesn't look good. So, you know, I would say, why doesn't the city do something with that parcel of land that's by Demers and 1st Avenue? Something like an urban forest, or community orchard, or something? Something that would try to heal the damage that Epic has done to that neighborhood. Now, there's reports of this beautification fund associated with the Beacon, but I don't know any details on that. So, you know, I guess the two questions I have is, what is the relationship that has the city with the Beacon Corporation, specifically about that little parcel? And two, the media's mentioned this beautification fund that has considerable monies in it that's somehow frozen. So I was wondering if that, you know, what impact would that have on this project?
Yeah, it's, developers own it, so we certainly don't own it as the city. If, I think it's, there's new developers that are going to come in, because the Epic's defunct now, so we're working with them to figure out what's next, but currently, we don't own it.
Epic's not coming back?
No, no, no.
So...
Has new owners.
Well, Dakota Commercial's now managing the property, correct?
Yeah.
So what's this beautification fund? Is there...
Yeah, there was funds that were appropriated, that they haven't been spent yet, or haven't been used, so we're, it's a wait-and-see to see what happens there. But it definitely could be used for something as we move forward, if that Epic project in that square doesn't get completed, so it's definitely an option.
So they're going to ask for input on how those funds would be spent?
Well, that's certainly an option in the future, the council will have to direct those funds.
Well, I just thought I'd raise those topics, because it's kind of, it'd be nice if there was a spring thaw, and we could do something with that, you know, coming here.
All right, thank you for your time, sir. Any further, Ms. Lunskey?
No, that's all I have.
All right, with that, we'll move on to item 9, citizen, sorry, city administrator comments, Mr....
Mayor Bochinski, members of city council, just on the heels of those comments, I would anticipate the Beacon Development will likely come back to city council, likely driven by local developers. And what we've heard from them is they do anticipate wanting to move forward with the public square, that'll serve the two buildings that are currently there. And then they are anticipating wanting to move forward with that third building that would front Demers Avenue. So I think more to come. In that vein, lots of people are working hard to how to move forward locally, and I suspect Epic will be wrapped up in state investigations. But at least locally, we have developers that are trying to move forward with the project under a different configuration, but still want to hold that same paradigm that we have. So thank goodness we have really good local developers that are at least trying. On the, on the Epitome Energy, I would anticipate Dennis Egan, the CEO, will be in front of the city council with an update. He said he would be back here in January, once he was hopefully able to come back with his investment, both in equity and debt. And from my last update, he's still working on that as part of that. So I don't think we know any of the investors in that, because he hasn't told anybody, and he's still working on that pain. So when he comes back and says, gives the city council wanting to move forward with the project, then the city will move forward with the various due diligence. But at this point, we're at a pause, because the development agreement requires Epitome Energy to come back to request the city to move forward with the project, and he has not done so. The timeframe, as I said, was January of next year, so I would anticipate at least an update coming here in the next couple months. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. With that, we will move on to mayor and council member comments. Ms. Osowski, any comments this evening?
First off, I'm going to have to echo you from your comment that you made earlier today, Mr. Mayor. I did see on the vendor list that Mr. Deptula did show up on there, but I reached out to Mr. Deptula just to get some clarification on really the benefits that he brings to the city, and he called me back right away. Him and I had a very nice discussion, and so I just wanted to say that I don't so much mind the investment in Mr. Deptula. I also would like to say that, you know, the past couple weeks at council, you know, we had a big presentation on homelessness, and today we were given a presentation on, like, food shortages here within our community. And I would like to say to the committee that manages the CDBG funds, that I hope that they highly consider giving a large chunk of that to the mission to help them feed our community and help home our community. I think it's really important that we take care of our community members that are already within our community. And so I urge them to really consider looking at giving a large chunk of those funds to the rescue mission. I, on Saturday, I was able to attend the children's Grand City Choir, and I thought that they did an amazing job, and I urge anybody who, it didn't take very long, it only took a little bit, over an hour, so the next time they perform, if anybody has an hour, I would recommend that you go and listen to the wonderful children singing in our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Osowski. Ms. Berg, any comments this evening?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lunskey, any comments? Mr. Friedhofs?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Veen, any comments?
No comments, thank you.
All right, Vice President Weigl?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right, President Sandy's gone. I don't have any particular comments, but enjoying this late spring, and just want to, once again, thank all of our candidates for police chief. I'm excited to keep this process moving forward, and ultimately having a new chief of police in the near future, so. Thanks for being here, thanks for sitting through the whole meeting. Not everybody does that. If you get the job, you're going to have to do it anyway, so I guess it's good practice. So thank you for that. With that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'm adjourned.
Got a motion to adjourn from Ms. Osowski, second from Vice President Weigl. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.